You had a fun day then. Got all the problems solved, right? Know where all the money's going.
Chairman, I got six fifteen.
All right.
That clock's slow.
Fifteen seconds in, we'll call this meeting.
Okay.
Order at six fifteen. Has anybody taken a chance to look over our minutes from our September the twenty-sixth meeting? If so, do I hear a motion? All right, we got a motion from Jody, a second from Bill. All in favor? All right, moving on down to number three, financial report, and I believe that's Carl's.
Yes, it is. I have, um, for the DDA, we just have the one account with not a lot of activity in it. Um, and no income in it, so it just shows up some expenses right now. But I do have a income statement for everybody. It's just for this year. And you'll see that, you know, she's got the negative four thousand, we're going to, we've got the legal fees. And the outside contract services, that was for a engineer, I'm not exactly sure what it was.
You need one? You need one? You got an extra one, Carl?
Yes, that was for an engineer. But that's, that's what the outside contract services is, so. And then the others for tourism conference that three people went to, that's seven hundred and thirty-five. And then the other thing in the city is the city funding, and so this shows you what all is. That's where most of the expenses are coming from, that fifty thousand dollars. So that sheet shows you all over here, things come out of that. And you see it's down to thirty-nine thousand, three thirty-three. Right now in the bank there is for the DDA is fifty-nine thousand. Fifty-nine, eight sixty-two, fifty-nine. Any questions on anything?
What does the DDA case stand for?
I don't know, that was an appraisal company apparently.
Oh, okay.
We were paying.
That's, that's who we hired to do the appraisal on the Miller property.
Okay.
Any question from Carl?
John L. Moore, that, that was the structural engineer, right?
I think that's right.
Yeah, yeah, he was, he was the guy that looked at all of the buildings to, to confirm that they were, that food, or work.
Is the liability insurance, is that DNO insurance? What's liability for what? Does anybody know? Pardon? Is DNO, okay.
And we paid that, it was over the weekend, I guess.
Yep.
So that'll be coming out of this account here.
Yeah, there'll be, uh, another payment of thirteen, what was it again? Thirteen something?
Yeah, and this is as of the end of August.
Yeah.
I didn't have the September, September information yet, so these are all, as of the end of August.
Yeah.
I do have a question on this first sheet. We've got legal fees at two thousand forty and ninety-nine cents.
Uh, yes.
Now, is that total of these over here?
No, that's, that's what's just been paid out of the, this, that sheet does not include anything paid out of the fifty thousand dollars from the city. So the total legal fee, and, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to, to incorporate the city funding numbers into this other spreadsheet yet. But by the next meeting, it will be incorporated into that.
But now these are, are legal fees that, that we have paid out of that separate account?
Out of, yeah, the, on the profit and loss sheet, that's the legal fees that have been paid out of the checking account. And then these others, I mean, these are legal fees as well, these have been paid out of the city funding. So it's.
Can you refresh my memory about those legal fees?
They're all consistent.
They're all consistent.
I thought that was this.
That's. They're coming out of, all right, let me, I'm sorry, I'm not explaining it very good. The total legal figures are twenty forty ninety, and that's, that's what came out of the bank account. But then, we're tracking how much is coming out of the city funding here, so it's actually a duplicate. What's on the city funding is on here, so, sorry.
I didn't know how much was out of that fifty thousand, so you can't keep track of how much is left.
Yeah.
Totally separate.
So we've, and I, I think I swear I was explaining it first, I wasn't explaining it well, this is my fault. But it's a total for the year we paid. Total for the year that we've paid in legal fees is two thousand forty dollars and ninety cents.
One sheet shows it coming out of the account, the other one's showing it out of that fifty thousand.
Five fifty thousand from the city.
I guess now I'm, I guess I'm confused now. I thought I had it right, now I don't.
So this, this, this one sheet for the city funding really is just to show you how much is left out of the fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
It's thirty-nine thousand, and we have a total of fifty-nine thousand in the bank.
As I remember, the, the city council voted to give us the balance of that at one time. That hundred and fifty wasn't in there?
For the, for the Miller property?
Yeah, yeah, but now that, that has not been done yet.
No.
But the vote was taken to do it.
I believe that's right, yes.
But it was specific, vote specific to that?
Project.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Anything else on the financial report? If not, we'll move down to number four, downtown development.
Okay, I, um, this is gonna be a light meeting, so y'all can breathe easy. All I'm gonna do today is just give some updates, I don't really have any items for, to, for voting today. As we mentioned earlier, the, the insurance for this coming year has been sent off. There was a little confusion about get, receiving mail and all that, I think we've gotten that, that clear and straight now, so we're good with that. Just to give you an update on the Welcome Center, um, right now we're in the process of, um, well, as you all know, the council approved the, the line of credit. Stacy and I are now working on putting together an official agreement, um, to bring to this board and then send to the council. Just kind of the final draft of what are the terms and everything, so we'll be working on that. And then, once we've get that in place, um, well, simultaneously, right now, we're working on putting together the RFP package. So that's the information that the architect will get to us. We will package that out and then solicit bids, basically, to, to do the project. So, um, we're working on that in addition to working on the agreement at the same time. So, um, they'll probably both, um, be on the next agenda, but we'll get the, um, in theory, the council's approved the money. We just need to solidify what the terms are, then we'll put the RFP out on the street. Go ahead.
A question about the RFP, Chris. Is that gonna be put out there as, as what I call a lock key job? Taken as it is, taken to a completion that is well defined?
Correct, yes, what we will get, what we will solicit is our bids. We're not really requesting RFPs, we're giving them what we want it to be, and they're bidding on how much it will cost to actually do that. So we're basically soliciting bids for the project that we have and how it's, 'cause it's already how we want it to look, where we want stuff is already, that part is already done. We're getting bids to actually do that project.
Would it be segmented or all in one package? What I mean is, would the roof be separate, you know, from the interior, or, or is it all bonded up or a jet?
I've been going back and forth on that. There could be some, um, I think it depends. My first thought is to put it out there as a, as one package deal, and from beginning to end, you do it. Um, and then we'll look to see how reasonable those bids are. It might be more beneficial for us to break it out, in other words, we could actually serve as general contractor, and then we just build out the roof. We bid out the electrical part, we bid out the plumbing part, and then in theory, we could get inmate labor to do the painting and stuff. So it just depends on, I would say, because if we're doing a RFP, we don't necessarily have to accept them. If we don't like them, we can go back and redo it. So, um, my first initial thought is to see what we get back from somebody else just doing it and handing us a, you know, a, a finished product, and we just, they just give us keys. Um, and then, if they, the numbers just don't look right, or if there's a big fluctuation in them or something like that, it might be that we break it down into pieces after that. So that's, um, where we are with the Welcome Center, so that project is still moving forward. As you all, um, also probably know, the directional sign proposal that we submitted got approved by the council. We have, um, identified some funding for that already. So we are actually, um, moving forward with a, um, RFP for that, to, um, to put out the bid for companies to actually, uh, start bidding on that. So that will probably be, um, three or four weeks before we actually get that done and out on the street. Already setting up meetings with, um, businesses to, um, lease space on the merchant sign. So, um, we, we have engaged about ten, I think about twelve people right now to set up meetings and talk with them further about that. So we're moving forward with that, which is good, 'cause that'd help us, uh, start generating some revenue, um, once we get that in place. We have met with, um, uh, some, just projects in, in process. We've met with a developer that's done some very high-end developments in metro Atlanta about doing a mixed-use retail residential in downtown Velareca. He seems very interested. If you've ever worked with a developer, you know, if they tell you, we'll talk to you in about two or three weeks, that's a good sign, 'cause usually if they're not interested, they'll say, well, we appreciate the tour and we'll, we'll, we'll see what happens. But, um, they seem very interested. This was someone that Carol tomorrow brought to us, um, so we're still kind of developing what that looks like. But that's pretty promising that, um, people are hearing about the stuff that's going on in downtown Velareca, and they're actually coming here and, and listening to our pitch and getting the tour of downtown. So that's, uh, very promising, um, that that's happening. Sharon has been aggressively working on our farmer's market. We've set a date of the first, um, is it the first or second Tuesday in April of twenty seventeen to launch that. We're getting, this, we're doing our due diligence now, we're working with, um, meeting with other farmer's market, kind of getting the best practices. We've been, uh, Georgia Farmers Bureau, we've reached out to them to help us identify some local, um, farmers that would be good. In the process of, uh, working on inspections and things of that nature as well, and getting those lined up for when we get ready to, to kick it off. So that's going very well, I think pretty much seventy-five to eighty percent of the people who were at the farmer's market before have agreed to come back. So that's very promising, so that project, um, will be very good. And then, of course, us adding the craft part, uh, obviously helps us, um, diversify the offerings that we have, but also helps us with the longevity. So when there's a lull in produce, we'll have craft vendors there that can kind of pick up the slack. So that's coming along very well, um, that's, uh, looks like it's gonna be a very promising, um, situation. And one of the things that, um, I didn't realize, well, I did realize, but I didn't think about it when I was presenting to the DDA, is that Tanner's actually sponsored the farmer's market here in the past. So there may be some opportunities, uh, from, for some additional monies that we didn't know, um, basically to help market and promote, um, the farmer's market. So we're in the process of, um, reestablishing that relationship, uh, with Tanner. Uh, so, having, and, but, and, that's all I have for, for updates on DDA, if anybody has any questions or is there a project that we missed that you need an update on, or something we need to bring back at another meeting?
So it sounds like our next meeting, we'll have pretty well the sign and the...
Well, yeah, I think the most pressing thing is the agreement for the line.
For the money.
Credit, um, but yeah, we'll have RFPs on, on, at the next meeting, um, to present.
Any more questions? All right, we'll move on down to old business. The old business? I think Bill's got some new business maybe?
I've got some.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Bill.
Well, I guess everybody's aware that Norfolk Southern has, uh, got us a little barrel. And I, I would like to review a little bit of history with those that, uh, that haven't been around as long as I have, which I think's all of you. Nineteen eighty-eight, I, uh, went to the city council and asked for permission to contact Norfolk Southern about leasing some of this strip downtown for a parking lot. And the mayor at that time was a guy named Ray Barber, the city manager was a guy named Robert Baller. And, uh, they, they were enthusiastic about it during the meeting, and they said they thought they could find enough money to actually do a, do a parking lot. Not necessarily a landscaped parking lot, but a parking lot. So I wrote the president of Norfolk Southern, and, uh, he responded. And we corresponded a couple of times, and he's, he, he committed to send somebody out here to talk to the city about the lease. And when they came out, uh, he was told that, uh, maybe they didn't want to do it right now. So that, that, that kind of went by the wayside. I kept in contact with Norfolk Southern over the years, and, uh, about a week after the infamous, uh, wreck down there on Chief Street that scattered ice cream from one end of town to the other. I, I met up with a regional engineer out of Birmingham, and we, we again discussed the parking lot. And we walked in and he agreed that a thirty-foot strip from the edge of what was Highway sixty-one, uh, to the south would be something that would be something that we could pursue as a city and landscape it. So, uh, we, the DDA, went ahead and, uh, had it, uh, had the, uh, drawing done by a local landscaper and submitted it to them, and it was a thirty-foot wide strip, basically from Carroll Road to Chief Street, from the edge of Highway sixty-one to the south. And I thought they could go along well, then one night, we're at a DDA meeting, and lo and behold, there was a signed lease here that the mayor had already signed, and it included all the land from the railroad track to the face of this building and the face of all the buildings down through here. And then to, to the face of the buildings, there where James is. In other words, all of the historic Norfolk Southern property was in, was included in the lease. And it was a five thousand dollar lease, which was about forty-five hundred dollars more than I was talking to the guy about with the thirty-foot lease. But it was already signed, and it was done. So we went ahead and, uh, had the landscaping done. And later, I went to the city manager and asked him to use the inmate de, uh, detail and some city employees to open up the area from Chief Street on down to Happy Valley, which at that time was jumbled and there you couldn't, couldn't even see across it. So, so we got in there one day and cleaned it out, and it has been maintained ever since. The city put in a sidewalk down through there to, to extend the park further on down. So you can see what we've got right now, it's been a long time in, in the establishment. It is something that certainly I, uh, I am very possessive of. But, uh, also to give up a crossing is not an easy matter. But I would certainly hope that this body would be supportive of maintaining our landscaping and maintaining the trees from Cheese down to Happy Valley. All of our landscaping back on to the, uh, east of Cheese. And, uh, if it, if it must be done, then to go ahead and close the Chief Street crossing. Because over time, and we have got some, some of the old timers to talk about this, as, as the railroad comes in to, to replace the ties and put, put more gravel in the bed, it raises it up just a little bit, unless you go to a lot of work to keep it flat, which they, they have done at this one right here. It is, it's essentially flat. We used to have one right in the middle of town, it got so steep that even the pickup truck couldn't go over it. So it was closed, and now there's a walkway that, you know, kind of comes up and disappears into the railroad track. And so the same thing is happening at, at Cheese. It is going up ever so slightly every time they do that. So, uh, from a, uh, standpoint of downtown development, I, uh, I would hope that, uh, this body will support the keeping of the landscaping and, and the sidewalks. Because all of that is within that right-of-way that Norfolk Southern wishes to clear cut. And the option that I, as I understand it, is either close it or clear cut. There's, there's no intermediate option there. So with that, that's, that's where I stand, and, uh, I would, I would like to have the support of this body at our meeting tomorrow night with the city council and, uh, and the city as a whole.
Chairman, you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think it's as cut and dry as what we've been led to believe. John and I have been doing some research, I just today got a copy of the letter and the emails. Um, I had asked Leslie if they could mark off what they were talking about clearing, so I don't think that marking came from the railroad, I think it came from the city. It's different than what John and I stepped off, and also, we have found federal and state law that requires them to do studies, like on safety, because train traffic is picking up, and Wall Street Journal says it's only gonna continue to pick up as it gets more expensive to truck stuff. When there is a train coming by, now, the, the roads are backed up, the intersections are backed up horrendously. If we close Chief Street, the backup is gonna be even worse on there. There has been no studies. When they were talking about the Mirror Lake Dam road, we had all these studies, we had all this input from schools and from the emergency response teams. We've had nothing on what this is gonna do, and I think it's gonna greatly impact, um, safety issues, you know, emergency response on that. If they will put in the shoreline parkway, the connecting shoreline to here, I think that would ease some of the pressure, and then, of course, getting the north loop will ease some of it. Again, I don't think that it's like all or nothing. I don't think that they're gonna come in and just take everything down. I think that they would work with us. I mean, we've just, they've said this, this is what we want to do, uh, blah, 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 and it's been like, oh my God. You know, I, there's been no negotiation, okay, what can we do? How does, how does this two-foot rosebush, bush seriously impact visibility? Come on, how does that? It doesn't. How do these crepe myrtles that are not even bushy down here, how, how do they impact visibility? They don't. You know, the only, you know, it, Jones Street, which they says has minimal impact, there's a lot more visibility issues there than there is at Chief Street. So someone's trying to pull the wool over someone else's eyes, as far as John and I are concerned.
They've been wanting to shut that crossing down for years and years, and this is, this is nothing new. We have already shut down two, two crossings that I can remember hearing go wrecked because of similar concern.
The federal law and state law protects these crossings. They have to do these studies, they have to put a thirty-day notice up at the crossings, not town hall meeting on Facebook and on, post it on city hall door. No, they have to do, you know, notices that public actually see, you know, public that uses it.
I don't, I don't doubt you. I have looked into it from the standpoint of the downtown development authority. For us to lose the downtown landscaping would be a disaster by now.
Well, I, I, I agree, I don't think we should lose it, but again, I don't think we should just capitulate that that's what's gonna happen. Again, nobody is negotiating, because as you, there are other people on our city council that want that closed, that closed. So, you know, I think, you know, that's just getting into politics, but, um, you know, I don't think we should roll over and play dead at this point.
Jody, I, I, I made my living negotiating for a long time, and I thought I had negotiated down a agreement with Norfolk Southern, and until a lease popped up that looked totally foreign to what I'd done. But now, if, if the city, whoever the city is, whether it's the incoming mayor or the city manager or somebody from the city council, if they're going to negotiate for some interim agreement, I'm all for it. But we need to let everybody know that we, we, the DDA, do not wish to lose our landscaping.
I agree with Bill on that one too.
That needs to be our position, and anything beyond that would be...
Yeah, I agree with Bill on, we don't need to lose our park over here.
I think safety is an issue too, and I think we need to see the study on what kind of impact on safety that the closing of that is gonna have, and we have not seen that. We haven't even heard any talk about it.
Then make them do it.
Yeah, well, that's, we're, I, I mean, I'll definitely bring it up tomorrow at the meeting.
That's, that's something that you and Johnny would do.
Right.
And, and, and I, I, I assume nobody else has.
Well, which is a surprise to me, but apparently.
Well, I'd just like to say, and, and I don't, you know, it's, I, I was at the meeting when the people from Norfolk Southern came, and it, and I don't know if they're gonna do a study. I mean, the reality, well, basically, what we were told is we have a lease with y'all for this land, this is why we're coming to talk to y'all. Some of the other cities didn't have a lease, so they just went in there and clear cut it. So they basically gave us a courtesy, but at the end of the meeting, they basically said that there's a thirty-day clause in this lease. And then that was pretty much the end of the meeting. So, I mean, we can push for a study, we can push for all this, but all they gotta do is say, okay, you have thirty days, and then you no longer have rights to this park, and then they come through and cut it. So I think, you know, we, you can demand from them what you want, the end of the day is, it's their property, and they have a clause in the contract that they can terminate the lease with the city with thirty-day notice. So I'm just saying that, just, just for the, the, for the purposes of information for the DDA, you know.
And that would leave the, the Chief Street open, and they would still have eighteen meters to hang up on it because they don't get to sign.
Well, that hasn't been a problem, sometimes signs have.
Well, yeah, the signs is the one.
They've still gotten stuck there.
Two, two today was pulled over there today. They won't stop, they pulled over, yeah.
My office is right there, and, and that's, it's still, it's not as much as it used to be, but they still get stuck there.
And I'm not saying that, you know, I'm not trying to say what the position of the DDA should be, I'm just letting you know what I was privy to at the meeting, so. That we were told there's thirty, and of course, if we read the contract, it says in there, there's thirty-day clause, so.
Well, I will make it quite clear that I'm speaking as a concerned citizen and a, um, someone that, I don't use Chief Street hardly ever, um, and not speaking for the DDA. But it, it is a huge concern for me.
It's a concern for everybody. That is an issue, for sure, but to me personally, one outweighs the other. If we can maintain both, I think it'd be great, but I don't see that happening. Not when you're dealing with Norfolk Southern.
Yeah.
Anyway, I plan on going to the meeting tomorrow night. I would like to be able to speak on behalf of the DDA, how the DDA feels about this. So I, I would like, like your support in doing that.
I agree with Bill, I think we need the park, I think we need the landscaping. If it, worse comes to worse, close the crossing.
If worse comes to...
If worse comes to work.
I mean, I use Chief Street every day, but if it's a, a deal between taking out the landscaping and closing Chief Street, then, you know, I say we'll close Chief Street.
Well, again, I just want to reiterate, it's not, if it was just closing Chief Street and that meant we just had to go use another, go up South Carroll or down to Jones, no problem. But y'all need to look at that when there's a train, see where traffic backs up. That's what you need to look at.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure.
I'm watching much as you are.
Do we need a motion on that?
I don't know, do we?
I mean, you could basically have an official position from the DDA if you wanted to. I don't see anything Stacy can chime in on that.
Yeah, if you wanna have a DDA resolution so you know you have everyone's support, you could have a motion in a second.
Well, I make the motion that, that, that the DDA support maintaining the park. And let it go with that. And whoever negotiates or finds legal reason to fight it, so be it.
So just maintaining the park then, right? All right, do we have a second?
I'll start.
Motion, a second, all in favor? I won't be able to make it, Bill. I've got a meeting with Stacy tomorrow night in Carrollton.
Well, hopefully it'll be a good turnout, but we'll see.
Okay, uh, discussion, I'll cook, we did that one already. Anything else on new business? Any public comment, would you like to say anything? All right, items for future agenda? We've already been over that, Chris, or?
Yeah, I think that's good.
All right. Nothing on the executive session? Have a motion to adjourn? Have a second? Motion, a second, all in favor? Seven forty-five, six forty-five, Tracy?
Well, you're not done yet. You have another agenda for tourism. Gotcha! Y'all remember at the last meeting, we were, we, we're gonna do two separate, cause they're basically two separate entities. So we'll have two agendas and two minutes, so on and so forth.
So we need to call this meeting to order then?
Yes, sir.
Do we have an agenda for that one, Chris?
Yes, sir, it was in your, it was in the email.
Okay, it's in the email, I didn't get it then.
Well, yeah, you definitely didn't get it.
Yeah.
He probably just looked at it and said, oh, this is two copies of the same thing.
All right, we'll call this meeting at seven, six forty-six. Uh, consideration of minutes? All right, okay, financial, okay, we done that. We've done number four tourism then?
Well, there's a.
Okay, financial.
We have two separate bank accounts too. Everything's different with the tourism, so. Here's one right here. You see, this one's a little different, this one has income. Um, but it's the, the tax collections from the city. So you see that, that first line, that's what we've gotten from the city so far, you know, from the, uh, hotel motel tax. And then the expenses that we've had so far, the, the advertising, uh, that was in the, uh, city guides, uh, I know the pages in the city guides. Um, but outside contract services, that is the, um, R and R design, doing the website.
That's two payments, right?
That's two payments so far, yep. And then the rest is just the office expenses, the checks that we had to buy. And then the other is a, a tourism conference that Chris and Sharon went to.
Carl, I got a question. The, uh,
Yep.
When we gave that money to, um, the rodeo and...
That's in the advertising, that's right.
Okay, yeah, we probably should split that out, cause it's different from charitable contributions that we make and then advertising that tourist, that the CVB's actually doing on behalf of the city, so.
I can, I can break that out.
Okay.
Five hundred and, and one thousand of that. Five hundred went to the Frontier Rodeo, one thousand went to Taste of Velareca. And then the, uh, Douglas County Chamber map was sixteen hundred and then the Welcome Guide was twenty-seven ninety-five.
Right.
That's how that fifty-eight ninety-five breaks down.
Okay.
And right now in that account, there is sixteen, six forty-nine.
What is the average amount that's coming in each month of the city?
Is it quarterly?
Monthly?
It's, it's quarterly. No, we get it monthly. Um, and I mean, it's ranged from seven to ninety-five hundred each month.
Now, since we now own Butterball, how about the monthly income for Met Society?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
It's not much, no.
Well, we, I don't know how that, because you know, we bought the building from someone else. I don't know if that payment was made all at once to that person who owned the building before we did or, cause I'm sure he's not paying eighty-three dollars a month. I'm, I'm sure he just wrote a check for whatever the amount is. And we haven't, we didn't own it for the whole twenty sixteen. So I'm not sure if the people who owned it before the city owned it got that money or not. I mean, we'd have to check with David Mecklen to see.
Any other questions?
All right. Moving on down to tourism, Chris, you got anything?
Yeah, I just have, um, two updates real quick. Just wanna let you know, we're still moving, um, forward with R and R Design as the company we've contracted with to do the rebranding. Um, this week or early next week, we should have some sample logos and taglines to share. Um, so be looking out for an email with that information in it. Um, uh, and then the only other thing from a tourism standpoint that we're working on, um, is just working on, um, building some relationships with some of the regional, um, organizations. We've had some meetings on a new, uh, Visit West Georgia magazine that, um, uh, basically the Times Georgian is doing. Uh, but they'll be placed in all the welcome centers throughout the state of Georgia. So we're participating with that. Um, and we, uh, at the next meeting, we'll be bringing back some, um, pretty much some standard operating policy for how we're gonna do travel, what is the mileage rate when we go out of town, stuff like that, um, for the board to consider, uh, at the next meeting. Um, so other than that, other than just putting things together and filling orders when people call, we've been giving out a lot of promotional stuff here lately, uh, which is a good thing. Getting a lot of requests. We, um, have a group coming in tomorrow for a casel training. Um, I think they're from all over the southeast, is that something? So we gave them some welcome packages with some of that promotional stuff that we ordered from the approval that we got at the last meeting. Um, so that's pretty much what's going on with tourism.
All right, any old business? No, nothing else, new business? Public comment? Out of first future agenda? No executive, but have a motion to adjourn? All right, got a second? All in favor? Seven, six fifty-two.
See, that was a good one, see? Mr. Taylor knows less about tourism than he does DDA. Cut off there.
You get involved in tourism.
Tracy, appreciate you coming.
Yeah, no problem.
Good minutes.